Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council. This Monday, July the 2nd, 2018 at 7:05 PM. Ms. Derry, would you call real please?
I see Brown.
Here.
I'm Billy Johnson.
Here.
I'm Charles Addison.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. If you would please stand for our prayer of pledges. Our prayer read at the proceeding by Councilman Danny McDaniel and pledged led by Chief Stuart Brown.
Our heavenly Father, we are thankful to you for another day of life you've granted us. We're thankful, Father, for this great city that we live in. Pray, Father, for the proceedings that take place here tonight, that we will do things in a civil and good manner in all things that we do that benefit this community. Be with us, Father, as we go through our lives. Forgive us of our many sins wrong. In the Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
You would join me in placing a hand over hearts for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, community. At this time, I would ask the council to consider approving the minutes for the June 4th, 2018 council meeting. Mayor make a motion with approval.
Second.
Motion in two seconds.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
I'm Johnson.
Yes.
Okay.
To Derry?
Yes.
With Derry, which is your office?
Thank you. On your agenda this time, we have a bid open. We are canceling that. I'm not sure exactly where we are on this handle that because we got work that we need to postpone that for the evening, so we scratched that. Moving on to approval of Mayor's model report, which we don't have one, but we continue to use the card. We've used it several times last month, so again, just sort of that.
Then we will ask?
Yes, absolutely.
Take that off if you do.
That's great.
Oh, thank you.
With council's approval, we'll do just that. I think we need to go on the possible building. Are we going to have a special call meeting today? I actually did not get to talk to Tim or Greg even once, so I'm not, I'm a little bit, or do you know Tom, anybody? Do we know that we reschedule? Looking at a call meeting, or did you do?
We don't know. We haven't had a, Tim said it wasn't public right now. Something's not working.
We'll try to communicate that thing and let you know what's going on and where we are. Committee reports, Special County Boys and Girls Club. I don't see Mr. Sunday. I think you have written a report from him. If you have any questions, as always, let Tammy know or myself, and we'll get those to Mr. Sunday. And your citizens also. And police more. Parks Commission, so I thought, sorry, no, nothing. M.A.S. Architect Fund, Michael's not here this evening. Water Wastewater Commission, Mr. Rattery did notify me that he would not be here. There was not anything on him at the end of the concern. That commission so much, but again, if you had any questions, you can certainly give them a call.
So that bid opening didn't turn now?
Sir?
That bid opening didn't turn now?
Well, it would have, I think, if they'd been there, if they did cancel it. He was saying because of that, he was aware of it before I was aware of it.
That and that.
Were we doing the Act? We don't have the U.S. statute.
Uh, actually, technically...
Yes, he was doing the study or coming in the study for...
Seventy-one corridor.
Our super.
The sewer water lines out.
I mean, we want to do the Act of Construction, reading some of that. You want to take that off the reports as well, because he isn't there really on the day.
I'll remove that too for the future, too.
Streamlining tonight.
Yeah.
Look at us.
He's doing the stuff, the station, that's what I have to do.
That's right, okay.
I think you tell, may I ask, Daniel, when you were doing the police thing, you got in the smart living here.
Well, there for a while, he was just part of the family. Okay. Citizens Forum, I do have a couple of folks that have signed up this evening, so if Mr. Dan Ladlin would come forward, state your name, although I just did send your address.
Uh, Dan Ladlin, I live in 141 Goldwood. I was here a couple of months ago asking you guys to consider updating the city's plastic ordinance. And I was looking for an update, see where we are, because I haven't heard of one. And I will come before long, where somebody's going to apply for affirmative. We're not, you're not in a position to manage it right now because you're out of compliance.
I may not be exact where I am on this, but I believe the start of this city attorney has got some information, but from this, is that...
I'll read the excerpt from the minutes.
I was about last month, that's what I said, so.
He had visited with, uh, when he originally came to Mississippi, and since the ordinance was adopted, federal government has initiated numerous notifications to the regulations since recently, 2013, and some of which have preempted the city's ordinance, what you're aware of. He said he would have something on his clinic committee and everything, and I actually was like, but...
I'm sitting there, maybe you guys don't have to, but you've got a little... Maybe you can go to help get this... The idea of doing this earlier was so you wouldn't have to hang out if you want to, you know, more than three, uh, meetings.
I guess you could automate it.
Probably would be a good place to start.
And you did, we did come to this meeting expecting something from him, this meeting, and I figure so it's fair.
Do you want me to add to the next thing?
Well...
There's quite a lot to say.
But Adam, did you?
I think we, I think we added, it kind of helps.
Reminds me?
Yep.
If you run into my hat and I don't call it, I'll still do it.
There's no one that'll have, I mean, there's no permit request or anything official that's been done.
What I was concerned about is the development of pine oil, but Evan talked to me, the Health Department today, was where the tank proposal still resides. It's not been approved yet, so there's some time. Water condition's already approved on it, and planning condition's approved, so once the Health Department passes on it, I don't think there's any barrier other than applying for and or receiving equipment to keep them from getting started. So we just, again, wanted to be current and...
A little bit ahead of games.
Well, I mean, it's better to do it according to your procedures, you know, with three reasons and three discussions opposed to wait till March, which is why we're sorry.
I will certainly call Mr. Hand tomorrow too, myself, just kind of touch base and see what he's had on, but if you do the same, that'll help.
I'll be too.
Thank you, man. Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm just going to call one of these folks, Kim France, I'm going to call Todd. Todd, Todd and Kim France.
I'm going to let her call me, because she does all the talking.
That's good. Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Good to see you, though.
Good to see you, brother.
And well, I'm not a speaker. I am a mom, so y'all are going to have to bear with me here a little bit. My name is Kimberly France and we're 324 Petway Circle in Greenwood. And so my name is Kimberly, and my husband Todd, and I would like to speak to you this evening about an issue that may not be prevalent in Greenwood, but is definitely an issue in the United States across globally. And we have a poster over here that Doug was nice enough to let me put up this afternoon. And I would like to thank Doug and the City Council members for allowing us to speak to you tonight about Pedal the Pacific. Todd, I've lived in Greenwood for the past 22 years. I was a junior graduate in 1982, and our three children graduated in 2010, 14, and 15. Our youngest daughter, Lexi, who will be a senior at the University of Arkansas in Fayetteville this fall, started this journey of Pedal the Pacific back well before December of last year. In December, she was selected to be a part of the Pedal the Pacific 2018 team. She is only, she is one of 11 college girls involved in this adventure. They are from Texas, Oklahoma, Alabama, and she's the only girl from Arkansas. Three of the other girls do attend the U of A. So what is Pedal the Pacific? It is a nonprofit organization that was started last year by three college girls who wanted to bring awareness to an issue that is sometimes very uncomfortable and is very hard for me, and it's the issue of human trafficking. Pedal the Pacific is a 1,700 mile bike tour from Seattle to San Diego, and yes, I did say 1,700 miles over the next seven weeks. They've already raised $115,000 towards their goal of $250,000, and that money will be dropped and will be given to the refuge in Austin, Texas, which will open its doors in a few short weeks. The refuge will provide long-term holistic care for the child, I'm sorry, child survivors of sex trafficking. The funds raised will help these survivors find healing and restoration. As a mother again, this makes me very uncomfortable, also very heartbroken. I can't imagine the trauma these children, these children must go through. I know many Greenwood families are involved in caring for foster children, and unfortunately, one of the statistics is that 88% of children involved in sex trafficking came from foster care in which they were in the care of social services when they went missing. One in seven missing children are likely victims of this. Child sex trafficking is the fastest growing crime in the United States. The average age of a person lured or forced into sex trafficking is 13 years old. Makes me want to cry. The numbers are astounding, and there are very few places for the survivors to go to heal. And so why did our sweet daughter want to get involved in something so heartbreaking? This is her words, not mine. She said, "As a woman, a daughter, a sister, a friend, and a mental health advocate," I'm sorry. This is, this cause is very dear to my heart. Human trafficking is a direct attack on our basic human rights, and I refuse to sit back any longer and simply watch it happen. No one should ever feel like a piece of property rather than a human being. We are all worthy of love, happiness, and acceptance. My goal here tonight is simple. I just want to make our community aware of what is happening and to let them know that a local women lady is taking action to make a difference in another person's life. The girls boarded a ferry in Seattle and started their trip in Burlington, Washington on Father's Day, June 14th, and will arrive in San Diego on July 31st. They just completed their 16th day of riding, and it's definitely been an adventure of triumphs and trials, talks and tears along the way. You can follow them on their Instagram or their Facebook blog. Please just talk to others about what you have heard here tonight. Please pray for the safety of these, and what they call themselves hilariously unathletic girls, who are giving themselves to help people they have never and may never meet. So thank you guys very much. I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and that's beyond commendable. If you would let me know when she returns, we want to recognize her for sure, whenever she's back, and I think that's just amazing, just, uh, thank you for sharing her, just appreciate you. And I think I told you when your daughter was here, my husband lives in Seattle, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, we have to go back, it's a fun memory.
There you go, there you go. That's, that's awesome, thank you. Those are the only two signatures I have on the sheet, as always, and I know I get some people staring at me in the way you take her. When I remind anybody, if you didn't get to sign up, you did nobody, you're certainly welcome to do that, uh, to come to the council tonight, so if there's no one further to do that, we'll move on with the agenda. Uh, we have a few agenda additions this evening, and I just noticed that the ones I made my notes on this morning in our, in our department head meeting, I don't have, so I'm going to rely on Ms. Derry to do it, or I'll still your favor, thank you very much. So, uh, number seven, gentlemen, with your approval, we will add the Parks Department. It's a rejection consideration, waiting competitive bidding on the Lake Trail project.
Megan, um, actually...
Rejecting all this.
Rejecting.
Thank you, reject you, because I'm sorry, that's right.
Sorry, you can write it.
Uh, number eight, it's Fire Department wants to, we got a member of Texas by board. And then number nine is the Mayor, by best update.
We did eight to seven, so we...
We actually...
Lock on the power?
Yes, absolutely. We discussed that, I mean, I was just kind of ready as we talked about it, so the only thing is...
We're moving eight to five.
Eight to five, yeah, because we need to do that, we need to warn the other two.
And then six is really it, first of all.
Is that confusing enough? It is for me, so, okay. Okay, uh, move into whole business. Repeal and replace unsightly handled ordinance 16-07, second reading. This, sir, Mr. Ricketts.
Did you want me?
I don't know that I do. We'll, we'll see what the council wants to do on this. Do you, we, we feel like that this is, I feel like we've got handed a large ordinance last month, to say the least.
I agree, and...
You did, okay.
Ever been of it, and want it once, and as far as I'm concerned, we can just not even go any farther with it, because the city needs lots of work.
I think that's how we all kind of feel.
We've got a really good, I got, I got a top of our current group from Charlotte, and we threw it, and I mean, it pretty much has everything we need, although it's not for us, by my... I mean, this, this thing here, I've had a nice second thing a lot, and it's, it's...
It's a lot.
It ain't even over close to being ready to, to, uh...
This ordinance came from, uh, came from, came from Fort Rock.
Guys, first thing we got to do on this...
We were just thinking on the study session?
Yes. The first, the first thing we got to do on this code enforcement, we got to figure out what department's going to be on there. We, we, we don't even have to, it's bounced around like a ping pong ball from the get-go. So it's going to, we're going to have to figure out this one thing. If you read through this book, about 90% of it goes back to planning, because he don't be worrying about trying to justify structures, because that's not in this. We got to do an inspector for that, as far as I'm concerned. And then there's, and even in this, it doesn't have anything like this actually gives the mayor some authority to delegate stuff to people. This has code enforcement officer in it 51 times. Doing stuff that he shouldn't even be administering stuff. Making decisions that we're going to have to back up, that he might not look up from the blanket, because there's one, one here that, I mean, he has the sole authority to screw, whatever he needs to spin to get something done, and we should have picked the tap up. I mean, it goes on and on and on. I mean, I've kind of got to highlight it, if y'all know what we get into, but, uh, I mean, nowhere in this new ordinance does it say that Doug can have a, the mayor can have any kind of authority or is it designated pointy? I mean, he don't, it's all, nothing gets jerryed, but it puts him kind of under the bus, because everything's code enforcement officer. He takes all responsibility, or he should just say code enforcement instead of just the officer. I mean, he's...
And I live under that, so I'm really...
That, that's what I'm saying, but there's, there's a lot of things in here, uh, I mean, and it doesn't even talk about anything as far as, I mean, I don't want to go on my period, but the, uh, I mean, the police department, it doesn't have anything in their role in this thing. I mean, there's a couple of spots where it says law enforcement, but I mean, some of this code enforcement stuff, as bad as I'd say, I mean, it's, some of the PD can, can do some of that stuff, too.
There's a lot of stuff in that ordinance, right, by other ones. My, my intention is when I put not just here, it's code enforcement over at PD, was because of that exact thought process, and, and certainly there are issues that he deals with, that in conjunction with the planning department, I don't know, we talked about before, and still got to get that kind of lined up. They, he has to work with that building inspector, but you're, you're correct, and Jared, in no circumstances should, and should we be leaning on him to go out and inspect a building, collapse it or not, if it's, that's, that's what he goes and gets the building inspector, or they meet there and they make a decision, and they go from there. I, I totally agree, and I, that the ordinance that you have in hand is...
Well, our, our current ones we got, the only thing I said that really needs some turned up is the, is the fines on period, we need to get some attention, I mean, they're between the goals.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like that last ordinance that Dan's been, you know,
has brought to us, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's so old school, and it's, the amounts are, I mean, I mean, not all those, I mean, a hundred bucks is a hundred bucks, but a hundred bucks, it's about like $10. So if you don't find somebody a hundred bucks, I mean, they're, they're not going to really leave much sleep over that, you're not going to get much attention out of it, but...
Well, I feel like also, we're making some headway visiting with Judge Wang, or again, I'll just say the quote that he repeated to me, and all of us that went over there to visit with him, get him, get him in court. And our, and our goal is not to run people through the court system, but in order to make it work, to have those teeth, that's exactly where, where it needs to be settled, and, and for not the council to have to be the judge jury on it, so...
Well, it's just like this one here on the, on the first, the first section of, section one, one-three, it's like the sort of building destruction, it's putting him in the deal that he's having to go out and judge his buildings, well, that's, I mean, it's what it says for him, but that's by the code enforcement officer. I mean, that's, that, we got a tiny department, kind of a building inspector, that's what it's supposed to be doing, so I mean, it's...
About a million houses in it.
And there's, I mean, it's, it's got some good stuff in it, but for the most part, for me, I mean, I'm, I'm just one, but I, I just, I don't think any...
Mrs. Ricketts, if you have, if you guys have time to...
When, during the study session, the part that I was here for, my impression was there were a lot, there were a lot of questions.
I hate to leave that, I had, I had to, and apologize for that, but I took the time to read through it, very diligently.
Yeah, my impression reading through it was that it was a lot, it raised a lot of questions to be answered for us.
Well, it's, it's more like a, to me, if one of them reading it, uh, week two, it's also like, it's more for a city of Little Rock or, you know what I'm saying? I mean, we've got a pretty good little, we're going to go from six pages to 17, and, and, I mean, we can't, we're not doing six right now, so we're going to have nine and ten.
Well, we need, we need to improve some things somewhere. We just want to let the mayor work some period and try to come up with some suggestions for us as councils, what changes?
I think we should make some changes to our current one, yeah, could put some teeth in if they, that would be just fine. Like I say, I mean, talking about the, all this amazing stuff, and the, you know, big concern was all the fire and the rubbish and all that stuff, and it's all, it's all right there, and our current deal is just, we...
Lance, I think, you know, I go back to where you started, that I agree completely, that we've got to begin with our structure, organizational structure, who's in charge for this, you know, how, how does that work? And I don't know certain right here, the answer to that question, but, you know, I think a lot of the, what the Little Rock ordinance is pointing at is a much larger organization for one, you know, you're dealing with a probably administrative person when they talk about code enforcement. You know, with some of the changes in our personnel in the last month, I think we have an opportunity to, to revisit our structure and how that should be, and, you know, the public work and stuff, you know, I don't know, I don't know how all that goes together, but there's, there's absolutely an element of, of planning and, and a building inspection side of the business that, that have to be dealt with here versus, you know, tall grass. Those are two in, opposite ends of this thing. And then whatever decision gets made, we need to go issue those people a citation and get them before, you know, and so understanding what the, what the structure and the process is, we're enforcing it, I think would help us, you know, and Lance is probably not far off, that what we have needs to be cleaned up, and it needs to be enforced.
Well, I, I, I agree, and I think, you know, yes, you know, well, that's the same that our existing one, that was good, I think, uh, but yes, I think as far as the enforcement, that's where I'm at, the citation limits, you know, because we just let it go to the courts instead of having us to be decided up here, or that we have this lack of judgment on there, because sometimes we see the judgments are just not very effective, where I think wanting to record would be.
Officer Ricketts and I, I know he's already got some, some ideas to put on that and together with it, so if, unless you want to schedule a study session, I, which is fine with me, for sure, but I think Officer Ricketts and I will get together, hone it down a little bit, bring back some ideas to tweak a little bit, and see what you think about it.
If it's, for what it's worth, what we can do, this my personal thought would be to, I would like to just say to this, that definitely this and here, you take the, you take the old one and the current, we have the current, you take the current one that on the books now, and get them, and get the police chief involved, and, I mean...
The county department, you know, everybody else who can sit down and talk about power code and building code, whether the, kind of those stuff go together.
I think every department head has some skin to get.
Yes, yes.
And then, again, what, how does that get, what's the process for getting it enforced?
But that's where your administrative part comes in, Doug, you're going to have to figure out how you want to structure that. Somebody's going to have to type the, the bullbuck ones, for lack of other words. So I may not want to, but it's just...
So we're just going to take this off the table?
That, that's my motion to...
Motion second, table.
Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Derry?
Yes.
Derry?
Yes.
Please, Officer Ricketts, the council, uh, number two, the police department is, you're here, okay? Want to speak on it, or just, is there any questions?
I'll answer any questions, um...
You should have a policy in your package.
I don't know, I wasn't here the last minute, something like y'all discussed it, or...
I don't think there's, I think, it all looks like pretty standard language, to me, and really look like there's anything controversial, and is there anything, but where did y'all derive this from?
Well, I just did some research on ICP medicine, and trend nationwide is to theoretically use of force continuum, because it kind of ties officer hands for, here in my, and you're finding the guys, whatever happens, it end up, knife out of the guy, you know, can't get your weapon, and the different, uh, those force chains, there have been some , uh, police departments sued and lost, because they didn't go strictly by the use of force continuum. So the experts are recommending that we believe that and just say, well, how reasonable officer act in similar situation?
Now, is this something they can bury the park, like the park runs are a federal standard, you guys got to go by? I mean, I don't, the, the fire chief will roll out some stuff that's in FBA where, but that, I didn't know if you guys have some kind of, I'm all about using force.
The older standard is what the, the courts are, whether it be a sub court or a US Supreme Court, uh, and that, that standard is what the reason the officer are running in a similar situation. So, yes, there are different, I mean, that's why I'm, we're wanting to delete the use of force continuum, because that's been the standard for, for years, and we're just kind of getting away from that, but that expresses the lawyer are saying that's not a good place.
So this is replacing the current policy?
It's, well, it's added to, and like I said, it took out the, the use of force continuum. I had in there the, uh, excuse me, the, the section four duty to intervene, if you have a fellow officer sitting in, or produce a force, they now have a duty to stop it, if they can do something, uh, it's also got the, the mental, uh, person with behavioral health issues in there. We've had trained to identify, you know, this person as a mental disorder, and not, and not being an officer because they're being officers that they don't understand. So with that training on that, that's in here, and for the escalation techniques, that's section six.
I have impressions, I, I think the motion passed this policy down for second Greenwood state, really, an ordinance. You say, are we voting on it?
Yeah, voting to approve it.
Make a motion to vote to approve this policy.
Second. Motion second, to approve policy. A motion to second to approve policy.
Graham.
Yes.
Johnson.
Right there.
Yes.
Is Eric?
Yes.
Right here?
Yes.
Thanks, sir, almost finished. Number three is the street department policy on limb pickup. Again, this is just a policy, not ordinance or a resolution, I mean that is something that I think the, uh, Dennis is here, our interim street director, we've heard from Simon in the past about the issue, some issues on, on limb pickup, I am not, definitely, and this is not suggesting we do away with it, this has been a service for a while, I know it's, it's free service and something that kind of was spurred by just a storm a few years ago, however many years ago, but it's something that the citizens look forward to, I suppose, or, or expect, so. But the issue of the size of the land, I think there's a couple of things that was addressed, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Was there something else, other changes on it?
Well, we took, uh, from fifteen foot, uh, to twelve foot, and the, the limbs down to eight feet that were dragging stuff from the back, kind of dangerous.
Mayor, this first bullet point is under the heading, items the city will not accept. And then the bullet point says, clippings or leaves can be placed into bags weighing more than fifty pounds each, bags with dirt or, will not be picked up. So, can we take bags of grass clippings, or do they have to weigh more than fifty pounds?
Okay, I'm at.
Well, we will take the clippings if they're.
What, what's happening out there, if people are putting their clippings and dirt and everything else they can find, putting in there? And we're, uh, a lot of this physical stuff, and we're trying to throw them into a, or a dump truck per se.
So, so the goal of that is we're not gonna take anything that weighs more than fifty pounds, we're not taking anything, anything other than grass clippings?
Grass clippings and leaves.
We've seen, we've tweaked the words in there.
You know what I, I would suggest is we, that we put, uh, the, the grass clippings or leaves must be placed into bags, and you could say not weigh more than fifty pounds?
Right.
Down below, under the requirements, but I would make a singular bullet, we're not taking any one out of them that weighs more than fifty pounds. Can you get away with that? And if they're land, I guess it'd weigh more than that.
Right, a lot of, you do it with a bag or a lot of time. If they're with backhoe, instead of just tossing them out there, make it easier on everybody.
You're running into just piles and stuff.
Piles and, but when they're picked up, put on, with a backhoe, on the back of the truck, they're sticking out the side. So if they're, if they're stacked neatly, we can pick them up and send them in the truck and make, and kind of contain inside that truck.
So the education part of getting people to understand this is how these people pick it up, we still, we're still gonna do it when I talk about council, just I need it better, easier for you guys to be able to pick it up.
Is there another page to this of, like, if I have limbs, what do I do? Where do I call, what's the schedule, how do I order?
It's the first Tuesday of each month, and it is on the old one, and it's on the new one too at the end of the, uh, the, that they will.
We do post, is that what you're asking, have you get information on, I think it's on website?
I'm not, I, yes, it is, but I, I'm thinking maybe we ought to do a mail or a, or something.
And probably, Wes is here and he will help us with.
Well, I would incorporate all of it into one thing here, this is the city's policy. If you call and ask us to do it, we'll pick it up on certain days, along the way.
They don't even have to call.
Yeah, now, so it used to be that they called city hall and scheduled it, now, we did, we did away with that a while back, and they just know, when I say they know, we let them know it's the first Tuesday. That's when he begins, he doesn't get it all done, uh, but, and, and you used to have this schedule going to check, now they just basically drive the streets.
Yes, because it's taking too much time to, I mean, we got routes, these people go over here, these people go over there, they make it.
So you just drive to town looking for them?
Well, and we pick them up while, and then we see them, if we get them, we can physically pitch them into the, then they pick up at that time. If it's, if it's a bigger pile, it's waiting for a backhoe, then we ride it down, and then we go, when we all, for all them picking up physical stuff, then we run around and take these piles up that are, uh, for the backhoe.
So with that, this first sentence, we wanna take grass clippings, leaves, move it down here to this last bullet point, say grass clippings or leaves must be placed into bags and must not weigh more than fifty pounds each? And then just leave the sentence, bags and dirt, and dirt garbage, leave that up here in the items that the law sets, is that's not right? About, about the bags, they're going to, does it matter to us whether they're these filed agreeable paper sacks?
We can put it into the filed agreeable sack.
Well, let's make that a rule, it's a rule in other communities, when I had to bag them up, we'd put them in the bag, we'll have to put them in some kind of big paper.
Like, which is what they're wearing on?
What's this, they put in a can.
What, uh, the can problem is lifting that up and all this stuff, we have smaller.
Just make it a requirement, you guys, we're gonna push the, down the pace, or, or, I have a, big old paper.
Yeah, you're saying also.
Big old paper, tall, pack the bag, break down the reason too, and then you say, you know, all the gray.
There's an informational period in the word.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I don't think, you know, last, first time, you know, last, a dry bag, I'm taking.
Well, I have a question about that, Dennis, if you, if, if that were the policy, you know, and now, you know, if you went out there and these huge tree limbs are laying there, do we, do we just drive on by, or do we go and stop and say?
The, the original seat, and this one was a hurried up needle, is it, you know, stepped in here?
Yeah.
It does have a box beside it, what we do is we'll check that, put it in the mailbox, and they'll have, they'll know why we didn't take them.
I've received that before.
Right.
One of them has a mailbox, excuse me.
Or they don't have a mailbox. On the front door somewhere, that, that it'd be.
But you leave on something, or why you didn't, okay, good, that's all good.
Something against your screen.
So we wanna, we wanna, if, if, if that, I mean, if, for, we're trying to, the goal of this is to make more reasonable service for the city and street department, if y'all are saying this is a big deal, make it valid, agreeable bags and.
This is a free service, guys, that you are going beyond all of it, and this is my, my two cents, and I'm, I'm just a citizen looking at, the least people could do is do the valid, agreeable bags.
So we add that more valid, agreeable bag in there, must be placing the valid, agreeable bags, and must not weigh more than thirty?
People aren't gonna like it.
We're gonna leave your yard up for free, you can literally.
I have another question.
That's what I'm saying, free, is the citizens paying the extra?
I, I got another question on this, so, it, under the bullet, there was says limbs may be bundled to the top of the string or torn, no wire, please. Are there certain limbs that we wanna say have to be bundled? I mean, if it's under, no limbs larger than four inches in diameter, the bundled limbs cannot be bigger than twenty-four inches in diameter. Would you say that any, for any limbs less than twenty-four inches in diameter must, must be bundled?
Yeah, we could do that, but I was trying to find the length of the, of the orders, to get by them.
I'm not trying to make it harder, I'm just trying to understand better.
I was trying to make it feasible for, for, and, and right now, it's a city, it's pretty chaotic.
You're just basically saying they bundle, it's okay with you?
Yes, yeah.
But that would have to.
A lot of times, they don't know, I mean, there's some.
Do you need a bundle? I mean, would you prefer it bundled, you're picking it up? We, we make this policy, like.
All limbs, you know, like the less than you want to shoot, or something like that, if you're running them up, it'd be.
And you know, all limbs, two inches or less must be bundled?
In diameter or whatever, what you're saying?
Yeah, just whatever, yeah, whatever size you wanna require, say those need to be bundled, that way you got all my limbs bundled together.
Two inches probably would be, you know, good, is it good?
We make the policy.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, I'll make the policy, I think, the, well, one thing I just along with that too, is thinking, when you say no wire, please, I'm thinking, if you don't want wire, we should say no wires, etc.
Yeah.
You don't like, you don't like, please.
I don't like that, I say limbs, I would say, on that, I would say limbs, two inches or less in diameter must be bundled and tied with string or cord. Does that get it said?
Yeah.
And it's been suggested.
And then the bundles cannot be bigger, and then, the bundles cannot be bigger than twenty-four inches in diameter, leave that in.
Probably look at this as a resolutions, bring it back to you, if the state is just a policy.
No, no, if it's policy, it's your deal, huh?
There needs to be a document about resolution.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I mean, that is still our deal.
So we're on the next.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does, does it need its own resolution, Charlotte, or?
We adopt our policies by resolution. It'll be attached, you know, this, we're changing.
We need a resolution for the, for that police policy we just passed out of?
The police have their, as a collection, I don't know how we do that. We do the personal policy handle, the department resolution, all the amendments to it.
I'm sorry, we're skipping out over here.
We do all our financial policy by resolution?
Let's bring that back.
Official policy of the city can have been.
Did we do the, the drug policy last month by resolution?
No, none of them.
So I'll place some potter.
I'm just gonna do one, I think we do all. Otherwise, you're counting on, I mean, you got it in minutes, I don't know which way to do, I just, whatever, I better.
Well, policies get lost in the shuffle over time if they're not done by resolution.
They're done by resolution?
No, by resolution, you can look back in history and see it as a.
I would do them all by resolution. Pass a resolution to a policy.
Actually, we should have a committee.
One meeting, so.
Lance, we need to all pass the.
Yes, thank you, sir, appreciate it, Dennis, again, I told you in meetings morning, I wanted to, to you privately and publicly, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate, and to the limbs. Uh, you literally can take the charge, and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, finance, new business is finance, budget resolution for timekeeping system.
Well, our intent to bring in budget resolutions, but we're not going to do that at this time. Primarily because when we were looking at the upgrade to our timekeeping system, for two reasons, one, because the current system has a support issue and end of life on our time course, uh, timekeeping system. Another with some security issues, the security issues, we're running into a little glitch, and we're not, we wanna give a little more thought as to which companies might go with, and the cost would actually be. Now, the reason that all this came about is because our time clocks that we currently use here in the city are no longer being supported, and they're no longer being, uh, upgraded or repaired or replaced. The whole system has been, uh, not supported by Microsoft, so the software is not supported, and that goes away somewhere in the fall, by the end of the year, it'll be totally not supported. The timekeeping system we currently have does not integrate with the center point, so it's, uh, we call the clock, we get a report, and we manually feed it into our finance system, points of error there. The other thing that we have is a system that, um, when you go to the new upgraded version of time course, the time clocks are rather expensive, and they integrate with the cloud, and the cloud then produces all the reports. So basically, it's a, it's a virtual version of a timekeeping system using a time clock. It's rather expensive because you have to buy time clocks, and you have to put them out there, and the cost, one time cost is supposed to be over four thousand forty dollars, just to replace five clocks. Then you have the software maintenance fees of two hundred and seventy dollars, so we thought, let's go with something that's gonna integrate, because that doesn't even integrate to our center point system, it's just upgrading our current system. So we went to Red Wing, who offers a timekeeping system, and they said, yeah, we can do the very same thing, we have an integrated, fully integrated version, when they punch in, punch out, and managers can work, and supervisors can look at what their employees are doing, right? And then they basically said, we'll just feed the center point system, there's no point of us having to do any subsequent date entry. So sounded like a win-win for us, it was much cost more, cost effective, there's no clocks to have to buy, we can use tablets as their timekeeping portals, we can put them everywhere, the tablets were ninety-nine bucks. The, uh, software would cost us a fifty dollar initiation fee, or initial, so they initialize it, and then you pay, uh, a per employee fee per, uh, month. So we're looking at eighty cents right now per employee per month, that's the only cost we would have to have a fully integrated system with our center point. Probably an issue though, is that we cannot restrict them to the specific tablets to do their punching, because it's a web-based system. So we're working out, is there a workaround there, so we can prohibit them from sitting at the breakfast table going, I'm clocked in, and they, they don't have that right now. So that's a big issue for me, the other issue is that whenever I talk to a heat disturbance, they're using the same system, they said the other issue that we're running into is that when a supervisor edits time punch of employee, the administrator could also edit that, and there's no edit report that shows who did the edit and why they did it. So we need to be looking into that a little bit more, so we're in communication with Red Wing to see if there's some workaround issues or some other issues that we can address, so they can address for us.
They converted it to a system called Aforce, very similar to what they're talking about. Uh, it has an option where the employee can clock in on their desktop, they clock in and out of their desktop, there's an app, or could do, they could do, but they can't clock in and out on the app, or the app.
That's what we thought we were getting with this, because that's how the original was sold to us, that we could restrict where they actually.
Management can use the app, I can modify it with an app.
Correct, exactly, we didn't want the employee to have the access, the access to it, what we found out today, that is not the case, we cannot restrict it. So we're working with our consulting, uh, IT consulting group, and they're saying that they could actually bring it through a web server that comes through to us, and then we redirect it with our certificate back to Red Wing, that prohibits the employee. So there was just too much going on right now today to bring you a budget resolution for that, we're not sure which problem, and though we do know that we wanna make you aware that we are gonna be having to address the timekeeping system, and we're gonna make it addressed in a way that it's an upgraded version, and it integrates with our current center point system, so we don't have a, we have to, kind of, we're seeing things, and it's a bit weird, but. That's where we are with the timekeeping system, we just wanna let you know it's coming down the road, probably we'll have this up for you at the next council meeting.
How old is our president?
Uh, that's a good question, uh, longer than I've been here, that's, how long, how old is it, it's like. How old is that time?
Oh, yeah, uh, oh, probably, we got it in, where it took hours.
Somewhere, it's about seventeen years old, it's, we, we already, we're already down one clock, so.
We were using the old, kind of, red, the, the, or bad.
So.
So we don't swap the magic?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a bad.
Was it red or green?
You mean the new one?
Well, I mean, apparently.
Yes.
Cartridge, isn't that the question?
Time to swap the magic, or the other time?
For the factories and forces.
I sure hope so. Started when you were really young. Keith, you think you're up for something?
I don't know, seven.
Round number five, Department of Budget Resolution, one approval for fire and truck purchase.
I know Charlotte and Tom have been helping me tremendously on this, trying to get everything in place for us, and we will do, Charlotte, which one of these is first?
The ordinance.
Yeah.
I mean, you can be pretty good way about this, getting the ordinance way first, or whatever, then, then.
Is that the one, the ordinance way we presented, first is a fire rescue pump or? All right, let's, uh, first of all, uh, this is a ordinance to wait to prevent it, and, uh, and authorizing the ship and action buyboard for offer program for numerous purposes. Whereas, uh, they have a copy this front, and on the form we read, whereas, is there, basically, it's authorizing this, uh, authoring us to join what is called a buyboard, and purchase our truck. What is good about this, uh, the buy board is it's a national buy board and it's bringing up even the, uh, the rest of the, uh, quite a few other, uh, cities use it in the state, El Dorado uses it. And it's not only for the fire department, it'll make it for other departments to contribute, whether it's the street department on buy pieces of equipment or they go through the buy board, pieces of equipment, uh, get with the company and it goes out and in through the buy board and they come back with a cost. And what, that's, uh, what we have, uh, had something go out and do for us, uh, with a sudden rescue pumper and they come back with a cost possible, that's quite a bit less than what we had anticipated and, uh, cost of rescue pumper. Uh, and let me tell you a little bit about the pumper design, we, our, uh, fire department, in fact, a couple of years are here and discussed what our needs were. And, uh, and then actually, actually after the last council meeting, uh, made some adjustments to that pumper. For the rescue pumper, adding another five hundred gallons, so it's actually fifteen hundred gallons instead of a thousand. And, uh, with the, with the cap system, a road cap system that will turn fifteen hundred gallons of water into fifteen thousand gallons of foam and make it more advantageous for us in the future, in any future areas where we may have a tire and not have hybrids. If you go to the two thousand gallon, you're looking at a tandem axle pumper, you're looking at something so big it's hard to manage unless you just go straight hang around. So this is something where we'd have to get, uh, it's called a heavy rescue pumper and it'll give us the advantage of having more capacity to go, whether it's in our city, within some areas without hybrids or to go out. And it still gives us compartmentation and we can handle ladders and everything we die so when it's on the truck, it's the same thing we asked for before. Uh, just a different, it's a different configuration, kind of, to, to handle, it's called G seven pumper. Basically, it has everything it can replace in degree and brings the Wilson, what we call the Wilson truck, it's out of the old state of two. It cannot, uh, we can't put our S C D As on it in the pit and we can just kind of lay them in there and then we've had to use it. It's a nineteen eighty-six model, which NFPA says after a couple of years you're supposed to replace your truck to be compliant. And so it's been out of compliance for a long time, but it's, uh, it's along the same square, we just had to have. What are we going to do with it after this, probably put it up yourself? There's some rural departments out there that don't comply with NFPA and maybe someone will sell it, but, uh, when we sell this, we're not going to have a place to work unless we station free and wrap this, it appears, it'll be a while before we get that built. So, uh, best thing to do, we've said, have them sit out here, gather stuff, got a good pump on it, just doesn't meet our needs anymore. So we probably settled or took an option, they could launch it, just to have it sell at a better price. At the time, uh, what we were planning on doing was buying the pumper and then the gross, cap system, uh, road cap system, compressed air foam system, about sixty grand. And would she prefer us bring it home, take it down to, uh, to whole markets off of road manufacturing and have them put it on? Hadn't, I had Sutton's back on, I need to put that on up there and then travel up there. And, uh, only, I think Pierce, when they put cap system on, it's about seventy-nine, eighty thousand pieces, he would put it on for, for us, about sixty. And it's the same road cap system we have on our rescue, which we try and prove is very good system, I sprinkle that on other trucks. But we get it here and we'll take it down there correctly and have them install the system, Sutton's degree, uh, put all the pretty preliminary stuff on it, uh, that's required to make the configuration work for his system. And, uh, basically the cab, we just like our power cab, except it's going to be a mess box to carry, uh, supplies, we don't have to have all that room. We'll have a mess box and there's going to be a little jump seat on it, a little seat to pull out, where it won't have any S C D A for an extra person so we can, can take plenty of personnel in the scene. Uh, other than that, everything on it, there's going to be a lot, the compartmentation will be a lot like our tower, look a little like our tower, we can make the tower on top of it. We worked real hard in trying to figure out what all we need to have in this and, uh, the price came in at four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and eight, which is, we thought it's a little five, but when we put the cap system on, uh, the road cap system, it does go over that amount, sixty thousand. Tom, I've looked several ways to do this and I can have him explain that, uh, if we feel like it'd be worth it, just for us to go ahead and put the cap system into the loan. This is not going to have to be paid for until next year, by now we just send them a P O and they start building, it'll take eleven months to build. And, but we've, uh, offered the bank about three percent of a commitment to a three percent loan for five years, Farmers Bank. And, um, and they understand that, uh, we're basically going to buy, or buy the thing now and, and it won't be here for eleven months if we build, if they're okay with that. The other thing is, is have the road system as a, to be put on after it gets here. Uh, equipment for the truck, uh, we've also discussed that and it's not going to come out of the sales and use tax, that'd be something where I've got enough money left this year, still on the budget. I'll start buying equipment for the truck this year and we'll put it in the budget next year and the equipment left to be put on. We already have quite a few S C D As, that's kind of the larger ticket items, uh, ready to go on the truck. And when they're here, they, they would have been on the Wilson truck, we could have put them on there, but right now we're sitting over at the station and the floor, but we can't, we don't have a place to put them. So, uh, Tom's working really well on figuring this out, every time I ask him, he's got a whole page of, uh, of numbers and configurations and different options for me and it's, I've been very impressed with how he's been able to do this quickly without, uh, it's just, it's, he's, he's very good for it for us and I appreciate it.
Me and Charlotte, we're talking about something. Being a, being a member of the National Buy Board Cooperative is a thing. Like Stuart said, you can buy other equipment through this National Buy Board Cooperative. What seems to me like one item for us is that we want to be a member of the National Buy Board Cooperative, right? Yes. And then waiving competitive bidding to buy this truck is another item.
I said to Charlie the other day, my, I posted to him on the, um, except, you know, chief wants to buy, or, uh, do we do coordinates by, by any competitive bidding in Arkansas and anyone who's also paid a process to the buy board, yes?
I think the National Buy Board Cooperative. I mean, if you want to buy, whatever, something for the city, you know, street sweep. I go down there, I see a street sweeper and the mayor comes back and says, I found a street sweeper for X. But I gotta buy through this board, so we need waiving competitive bidding to buy this street sweep, y'all okay with that? Sure, we're already members of that.
Where's that ordinance? Well, it's hidden in the.
It's hidden in this other thing over here that nobody would ever find.
So you can just, one separate.
Well, I think they're two separate now.
Yeah, I think it's separate.
I believe that Charlotte just said, said you're turning.
That's what he said, so, that's what he said.
I mean, this looks like.
What, did I say what his reasons was, Charlotte?
No, just the, yeah.
The question was, can we? Not necessarily.
Should we?
I said, do we?
Do we?
Do we do that?
Is your, what are you thinking this buy board is? It's fifteen hundred dollars for the vendor, so we're not paying.
Is that always the case?
It is for this platform.
You mean, yeah, I think if you look back on this five years, it's going to just kind of look like we just got a bunch of stuff together, dirt, uh,
Well, the buy board is part, you can buy furniture, you can buy that anywhere. It's, it was originally made in school systems and municipalities started tacking on to it. So now you've got fire trucks on there, you've got probably pregnant workers, you just, whatever person is on there and everybody will do this. So basically, we said that, said to put this stuff together, something submitted to the buy board, buy board is the one that gets it all out and then they just come back to.
So basically, what you're saying is the ordinance or. We need to.
Is that an ordinance?
I don't think, the ordinance of Charlotte, Charlotte's, and let's put this together so that.
I wish they had something with little teeth and then you throw waiving competitive bidding, it'll have to be a dollar out of my chair after a little while.
Okay, I'm just pulling one real quick, if you can do that on the, or I'll add this.
So again, that's to the point, that's to the point of, because we've got all this complicated stuff about the National Buy Board, what is it, we're going to be part of it. And now all by the way, here's why we're waiving competitive bidding. I think it needs to be two days separate.
Yeah, you can actually have them vote on this tonight and you remove section two completely and the second paragraph of whereas.
So we're just voting for waiving competitive bidding tonight?
Yes.
Well, we have, we have to go on the top of it, that's part of.
But I mean, that'll have to be a separate document, but they'll.
Go ahead and do your voting and the mayor make the change is our thoughts.
Maybe, maybe let's know why we're, we're wanting to do this right now.
I mean, this entire ordinance would, I think sections one, two, and three, you could probably be fine. If this ordinance, I mean, the title was an ordinance waiving competitive bidding to purchase a truck.
And then just remove the authorizing.
Through the National Buy Board Cooperative. And then the authorizing membership in that is a separate item. Is this, is the buy board just like a rich man's state turnback deal, where you buy them trucks for?
No. There, there's multiple buy boards out there, this is just the one that they deal with most, there's an E K Austin buy board, it's about two grand a week to get in. But they, they deal with anything, mostly everything we buy, like right now.
Why, why is it that this all the same thing for us, we bought lots of trucks, nineteen years ago.
Has everything to do with finance, Gregor, I've asked her since I've been fire chief, joined the buy.
I remember you asking governor this, kind of?
Not, not you, not obviously, that's. I think it's the finance department, maybe, you didn't want to be in there.
I was about to, no, get that.
Then it's approved by the state, the, uh, the chairman department, it's valid. What they do is they do all the legwork of the dip box and sport and they come back with an acceptable lowest dip, you know, basically better than you could probably, again, you did all the legwork. So the state says it's advantageous to the city and the citizens of the cities and they approve it, so.
So the state approves municipalities joining and waiving competitive bidding for the purpose of buying through the.
The idea for using this floor is so you don't have to go out and do it in the middle of the cross.
You can let them do it for you, they do it for us to submit it. Yeah, I've asked several years and this. I would say, Tom, Tom or Willans look into it for me, any look into it?
If they do competitive bidding, they do competitive bidding.
They do all of it.
Is it not similar?
Is it not similar to what we already do with the other, what about their, the street department, when they buy through the other, what's the one here that we buy through sometimes, state bid?
Oh, that's what this is.
That's state, that's.
It's a state approved.
Okay. Well, to, you know, to Tim's point earlier, I don't, I mean, I've been complaining for a while about waiving competitive bids and all that kind of stuff. And for half a million dollars. Again, I'm, I'm not a fan of waiving, or emergency clauses and all that kind of stuff.
No, no.
I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have two of these that are right.
Oh, the urgency is a price going up on the truck, uh, our, with the tariff, they're having an eight percent increase. And they, uh, we were up there looking at trucks back in April, uh, who were at F D I C, we've been talking to them, having them come by, talk to us about trucks and then the tariff came to the day. Uh, myself, personally, calling me and said, Stuart, uh, we've been told there's an eight percent increase coming. And I'm sure when it's going to happen, then they sent us a letter from the president of the company that said, the vendor's not got it, and Tom has a copy of it also.
Are there one company that makes these trucks?
Oh, exactly, this is the, you, this is the company that had the, the bid that's favorable to them.
Those have a rate increase.
All, all companies, everybody's, it's an industry right increase, we just know Sutton's only eight percent. Uh, I talked with, uh, with Pierce this weekend, they said, oh, ours is three percent, well, they didn't say what happened two weeks, or three weeks ago, it was another three percent increase. So they're doing it gradually, Sutton says, we're just going to do the eight percent increase, it's coming. What they have done, and it says here, uh, or it says on a packet they put together for us, is they're holding the price for forty-five days for us to try to figure out if we're on purpose or not. And so we've been through probably four weeks of that already, just trying to build the truck, uh, put everything together that we need and make sure the buy board stuff works, works out and all of that. So we're going to have to pull, we're going to have to pull the trigger on it as long as we have an emergency clause under it. But that's not thirty, we figured out a thirty-eight thousand dollars for the increase, just to wait for them. So.
How much?
About thirty-eight thousand. Because that's not included in the cap system, the cap system's not part of our increase, that's a different company.
So did you get to look at several different bids, or you said they presented? They just, the, the National Buy Board just says, here's the lowest one.
Yeah.
And you say, okay.
Yeah.
Did you see what the other options were or what the other?
No, we sent them the options we want.
Right, but they just send you the one.
This is your lowest cost.
This is your lowest cost.
Your trust in that's.
That's the idea with this.
It's a, it's a. I mean, we're not the little untrusted bit for the others.
There's some, there's some more to this though, and when you get into the pricing, I can tell without.
Okay, okay.
There's a, um, what they've done is they've said, now if you pay, you don't have to pay for this now. You can pay for it at the time you claim the truck, which is eleven months from now. But eleven months from now, we've already been talking to the bank, that interest rate, and they actually, today, we were quoted as high as three point seven five percent. Right now, we're locked in at three, and he's going to keep it there regardless of whether that goes up tomorrow. So he basically is saying that you're gambling on that interest rate going up, so if you pay for it a year from now, you're going to incur a lot more interest in that financing. The second thing is that the bid, the Sutton said, if you pay twenty-five percent down, we're going to give you a discount on that price that we already gave because you're paying a lot of money in front. If you pay fifty percent, it's a two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar a discount, if, I'm not a discount, a thirty-eight hundred dollar discount. So you're paying about two hundred and thirty-two thousand. Seventy-five percent would be three hundred and forty-eight. We, none of those are good options to us because we don't have that cash line around, we'd have to go finance that. So it, it's an all or nothing deal, you either postpone it till the time you take physical possession or you, you take a hundred percent of the financing now and you finance an asset you don't know, it's a future asset. So we went to the bank and we asked the bank, are you okay with having nothing that you have a title to, to loan the money on a future commitment? And they said, absolutely. And matter of fact, they even said, we'll even do the sixty thousand for the cap system or the cap. And they said, we said, well, that's great, then we can finance it both together instead of putting that in our operating cost budget for next year, which would be a sixty thousand hit immediately, rather than a five-year financed yet. So we decided the best alternative was to go this year with the, um, seeking the amount to finance and get a seven thousand seven hundred thirty-three dollar discount on the price of the, um, actual truck. So we built that into this with a fifty thousand dollar deposit, that fifty thousand dollar deposit on that loan is a good fake gesture from the city, saying we have the money, but it's, uh, it also lowers the amount of our financing cost. And that fifty thousand comes directly out of the city's southern use tax cash now and is reserved on this year. So, um, when we get into, if you approve this and we get into the actual resolution for the budget change, I can say exactly how that cash flow is going to work on your current.
Want to see how that cash flow works before I figure behind that.
Okay, we can put the, we can do that too.
I guess.
Right now, um, there's a couple of ways of looking at it.
I'm looking at city sales and use tax here and giving this, trying to understand how we've got an extra fifty grand in there to spend.
More paper. All right. What I'm going to look at is the bottom section, which you see down below where it says budget, like, tax. What you see is that. What you see is that, we'll do it in two different ways, we go to the very bottom where it says fund balance twelve thirty-one, that's the amount of money he has right now in the bank, the city sales and use tax, that's restricted.
Oh, sorry.
Did you hear? Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, now that's already tucked away, that's in the bank, that's not money that he had in his current operations. What you see on this budget, that you have is current, that's the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand that we get from revenue from city sales and use tax. He's committed to that, right now, a hundred and eighty-two thousand to spend in things that he's already budgeted for, so he was gonna tuck away a hundred and thirty-two thousand as a surplus into his current three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Okay, so there's where the fifty thousand would come from, so if you go above, you'll see the fifty thousand plus the thirty-three thousand in four months with the financing is an unbudgeted eighty-three thousand. So the eighty-three thousand comes off that one hundred and thirty-two surplus, leaving him forty-nine thousand, and in talking with him, I said, can you give something up on your current budget in order to help bolster that surplus? And he's giving up that Polaris, that was a budget, he's not gonna be purchasing that two thousand and eighteen, took it off the budget, and that would bring you up to seventy-four thousand dollar surplus. So basically, you do have the money, you are gonna add to your city's southern use tax funds this year to the tune of about seventy-four thousand dollars. So, money's there. And that's financing the sixty thousand, taking the seven thousand dollar discount, taking advantage of the three percent of interest rate right now, which is very favorable, um, it's a doable for him.
And it's his restricted fund, basically, he's got...
And it's his restricted fund, which is what it's for.
Right.
That's what that money's for.
You guys will see once we've done the very last one, Tom, he didn't figure one of those out.
The only issue that we had, and when I say we had, Charlotte, your quote came from Farmers Insurance.
I'm sorry. Why? You know, the thing is, everybody interrupts you when you're trying to do all this, I mean, that's alright, what did I have?
She made a big deal of it, I don't know.
I had a rest of truth wrong, right?
Well, again, I know that there's a bridge from possibility that, uh, interest rates, uh, could be much higher than just a half a percent in eleven months.
Correct, and I, I based the comparison at the top on three and a half percent, he's quoted today three percent.
If you're comfortable that he has the money and this is what you wanna spend your money on, knowing that there's a finite amount of city sales and use tax power out there to spend. I'm, I'm always trusting that you're, that this is the priority for y'all, and it seems like a lot of things come up we wanna spend money on in the fire department, and...
It's a future thing, though, this is eleven months now from now that it's...
I understand, but, but fire section three is a future thing too, that we're saving for, there's always...
Well, we're looking at bonds for that.
Well, I, I understand, but I'm just, I just wanted, if you're comfortable that this is where y'all wanna spend your money, and if they've got the money to spend, then I don't have a problem, but I just always wanted to raise that question because...
As a, as a, as a group of us, and we feel like this is a hot priority, we were, we had a fire the other day, we had one truck working well, the other one we had some issues with, and we had one of our frontline pumpers. And, uh, it, right now, we are concerned about our backup pumpers, we have two engines that are over twenty years old and two that are under, and easily, an Alar nine years old, uh, it's hard to believe. But we're needing to, to have that engine, and this will be the one out of this sales tax that will get, and it's, it's just time for, uh, it's time to get a truck out of service.
Tim, I know you've got some support here, as you always do, this, this officer wanted to speak or just give an honor, anything, I don't want that.
I just, I'm looking, trying to make contact with...
Somebody make a call.
This is what y'all...
Fire the other day and we were about pumping spare ones, so we've, we've got to do something available with that.
I mean, I think it's important, like what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, in regards to station number three, you gotta have something involved for that firehouse building, so that's also really troubling, like...
Well, I would say this truck would end up being out there when we build it, because that's how we couldn't make pass seal on, I have a little area, I have a big station.
We don't very often pass orders that we don't have in front of us, we're peeling off the National Board part of this and having, and saying we want that, except the ordinance.
Section two and the second paragraph of whereas, the only things to remove in entirety from this ordinance is the new balance.
But then the new ordinance would, that we don't have in front of us would just say that...
Yeah, that part.
Right, now, I mean, we gotta do that part before we, I mean, if he's wanting to go, it doesn't make any sense to wait competitive bidding for the emergency clause, and then he's, we have to give him permission to be part of this board, right?
You can just vote to authorize the mayor if you trust that is...
Well, and we, I mean, it's not, it's not unprecedented for us, as we have, we have, and we also have, we also have, passed, I don't know, had a certain resolution served on that, I mean, seems like we need to...
Probably never the ordinance.
It's pretty...
I just, I mean, I, I told Tim Moore about it, I always thought I could admit the cover light and...
Correct.
The deal's good, they'll close at time of day, you know, and here's all these papers that you haven't got to read, but it's no good tomorrow.
Yes, you can, you literally can allow him or allow the mayor to enter into a, a purchase order agreement with them to start building the truck, and we worry about financing eleven months from now.
But, but I mean, as far as wanting membership, that's just really a fifteen hundred dollar ride.
Well, they're not paying, we're not paying.
We're not paying.
Right. It's a bigger one. We fixed it. So, do we have to have an ordinance to join this National Board, or is this...
They require it.
It's a resolution, they're saying it's a resolution.
So a resolution...
They wanna make sure you know you're...
I really think it's gonna be a resolution.
Well, you have seen, you have seen...
We have passed resolutions.
Yeah, I mean, why, why couldn't we, why couldn't we pass with the tendencies of, you know, that we've done many a times?
A resolution, we've done that, it's not necessarily...
I mean, so... Can't you say that we're gonna adopt kind of the, the warning for a resolution of section two, uh, in this ordinance?
Yeah, that second paragraph of that, I mean, that...
Have the clerks read the ordinance in its entirety that we are passing. It's not written. And it's on record of what we're...
But this ordinance, waiting bidding would be, right?
Now, this is, this is a waiting bidding, what we don't have in front of us...
Resolution with...
Is this ordinance for the members, we're asking.
I actually think it's supposed to be a resolution.
Well, I think that's what we thought.
I think it's...
I opposed it to, uh, as a combined ordinance, but if you were sitting here, I would support it with your resolution.
It just requires a resolution.
I think we have motion.
I made your motion, we put on, we, we put on this ordinance waiting competitive bidding for the purchase of fire rescue, comfort for the fire department, striking authorizing membership in National Bible Board of Products. But leaving declaring emergency, and then, uh, we're gonna take out the second whereas?
Yes, the whole paragraph.
The whole paragraph, and we're gonna take out section two.
Yes.
So my motion is on this ordinance waiting competitive bidding without the second whereas, without section two. So you put off, first we put title on it.
So, are we gonna come back and make a resolution there?
Yes, get later.
We'll make sure we're covering...
We're gonna do it.
A resolution for what?
Join the Bible Board here, let's do this.
I thought Stuart said they had two.
Now, Stuart...
Well, I think a resolution, Tom, correct.
It's a resolution, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to say it.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
It's unanimous, an ordinance waiting competitive bidding for the purchase of fire rescue public for the fire department declaring emergency for other purposes?
I motion we, I'm gonna go to my second, I read.
Second.
Motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dennis?
I motion we adopt the...
Same.
Motion to second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
I motion we adopt the emergency clause.
Yes.
Motion to second to enact emergency clause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass a resolution that, okay, says this whereas right here.
The second word.
It says this section two, so basically, I'm making a motion, we pass a resolution that allows...
Authorizing membership.
Yeah, authorize membership to the National Bible Board, as worded in this section where you're looking at right here. Does that make sense, Charlie?
Yes.
Now, let me, let's, let's do a little, clear it up on that, is this membership, is this something the mayor can just have credence in his, uh, his guy, he puts in charge, what's it called, the, uh... Yeah, he named him, wait, what's the, what's the, I mean, what are the ground rules for this Bible Board, I guess what I'm asking, is it just a, if anybody wants to buy anything, it can be their...
They didn't expect it to be like that, right?
I mean, all you're getting, this is what they're gonna do, is just go create a bid on your behalf.
Right.
You should pick out a piece of equipment, send it to the Bible Boards, and they'll...
And we don't make the payments.
No, we're already...
You're already in there.
That's cool. But to me, that is gonna help us, I mean, there's been the street department that has, as I said, wanted to, uh, wait competitive bidding, be all it is. Always is that uncomfortable feeling, you know, that they, you know, that we're, we're waiting competitive bidding, and this way, they can...
Like, is I, is the state...
Everything's authorized and legal, and they take care of all the... They work for you.
But you're, you're gonna be a member of this National Bible Board because of the fee that they're paying.
There'll be a separate fee each time you...
For...
Said it's paid by the bid or not us?
I'm curious if there's either a fee every time, or if you're fifteen hundred as an annual membership.
Only the fee that comes to us, I think, say, say how much the, the, what the cap bill...
It's the current space fee, but they need a resolution for us to pay this way.
Right.
Well, this one goes out there two weeks from now, it says, I'm gonna buy me a street sweeper.
Those are the National Board people, they have a lot of...
It sends it to these people.
The government makes the street sweepers have to pay, that's kicking a little bit of national...
I have a question now, does that, like, if we're a member of this, how is anybody gonna feel about using the state of Arkansas bidding thing?
They can, it's...
Like, if we don't, do we have to waive it in Arkansas every time, or, we need to ask the authorities that?
You don't have to go to this National Board every time.
You don't have to go to this Bible Board.
They're not requiring you to do this.
Oh, I know, I know, but if we don't, do we always have to waive it for Arkansas, we're gonna, that's what we need to find out.
Oh, yeah, every time you use this, that's why you can...
Yeah, because we're, we're accepting a bid, but it's not Arkansas.
I don't think so.
And maybe it's a check with the...
But the authorities would just say Arkansas, it's not a vision, and I don't know.
They said, they said as long as you use something that's approved by the legislative procurement, um, office, you're comfortable.
Okay, I got it, that's true.
They said, they want you to look at it, just verify that it's okay with the procurement, and you're good to go.
And we've worked on that, you been in there, talked to them, or...
Okay, just make sure we have it next.
So, I'm not sure.
I agree with what Charlie said, well, what?
Otherwise, we wouldn't go through...
When the state of Arkansas is doing bidding process, they think the lowest acceptable bid, gotta, gotta, it all's up now, we can just go somewhere and run it.
Right.
Oh, I don't see where she's going.
I understand that.
This says, membership is free.
It's for us?
It's for us.
Signing it, membership.
It is for us. The vendor has to pay the fee.
What's Texas got to do with this stuff?
That's where it originated in the city of Boston.
Somebody made money off this, this...
It's not like that, no.
It's just a great...
Charlotte, I'll approach her second to resolution.
We do?
Motion to second. School board uses it, it's for the kids.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson? Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Next here, that's unanimous.
Okay. Next, we have... Which is the resolution to purchase, serve the property, the president, the president, the upper, and the press air policy, press system, and the city's budget, the big three's got.
It says, let's us win a billion thousand, and now they're in the question, make a motion to pass this resolution.
Same.
Motion to second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yeah.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes. Anything else? Something was reading...
You know, six and eight, if you like.
Yes, we got the ordinance writing, the, the resolution to enter into the Bible Board, and then the budget amendment, so we're good.
Okay, so, anything else that we need to get passed tonight before they murder that person? Thank you, thanks, you counsel, the, uh, the fire department had a working department, put that all together, and then with the subtennis, we're trying to recruit the Bible Board, it makes so much change for us that, and I think that's gonna make it easier for us to city...
I wouldn't have, Tom would have explained all that.
Hey.
Martin would.
I tell you what, Tom, Tom's, Tom's a great...
They changed... Like that scene, Mark lost the back third line.
Tom is real, I don't know if you heard or not, but I heard more street sweepers seven times. If what?
Let's talk more ready.
Okay.
Or three more?
I appreciate you going to dick, are you? What about the Bible Board too?
Are you, are you, are you about to break up?
I ain't, I'm never gonna say no. The, uh, purpose of coming here today is, uh, we, our purpose commission met, this last week or week four, and as we, uh, we voted to reject all the, uh, bids from the October seventeen, two thousand seventeen, uh, bid tabulation, which I will get to before we get going, but that's the self purpose, and I'll give you a snapshot of it, so you don't have to, uh, cover the whole packet itself. And, uh, this conclusion came upon staff recommendation, uh, to them, because I, after talking with, um, Arkansas Department of Transportation, uh, there were several factors that we looked at, as well as with their legal counsel, on what the best course of action for the city of Green would, would be. And, to be honest with you, just looking at the ins and outs of this, I don't feel like it puts us in a good position to be successful, but just being, I don't wanna come to you guys, cause I ran out of money on the project, that's just not acceptable, um, with what we're trying to do, so, the route I'm proposing, I feel like it's not only most conservative, but it's most responsible, and in lieu of, uh, rejecting the bids, we'll immediately go back to it, and, you know, open them back up through protocol. And that itself, you know, will be compared to the same thing coming out of the way we've worded it, but as you see the bid, the base proposals, there is quite a bit of, um, you know, differential between the three, and the engineering architectural estimates were between one twenty-five and one fifty. So that, that kinda gives you a base of how far these, some of these were all, were on.
This itemized breakdown, I mean, is it clear on the itemized breakdown of why it was so far apart?
Yes, um, and without, you know, going into specifics on, there was, we contacted, via email, the contractor, the old pit hundred, and he, he agreed that he may have missed a few items, especially on the cell phone solar lighting, because that stuff's fairly expensive, and we thought part of it there, and as well as, um, the stone masonry.
So what, what portion of the trail was bid into construct, was this map, was it...
Yeah, the map kind of, so.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at it forward for me, but I just, for y'all.
It would be seventeen thousand, uh, linear feet.
What was the priority there, was it the north loop?
East loop, east loop extension.
Okay.
And that would have...
On that. East loop extension, I, I don't see the east...
No, that's the...
I see east RIP grant, I don't see anything about, I see the east loop.
I see that east loop.
See south loop extension.
It would be the R, it would be the RPP grant, excuse me, the, uh...
Okay, so, so the grant wasn't here to do this?
Mm-hmm, it would do that part plus the, uh...
So, how do we understand that, so right now, when I go out there and run, I'm, I'm running on this, this, this solid line here that's...
The hogs the leg.
The hogs the leg, and you're talking about making a second parallel trail to that, inch back, that's not there present.
Right, and it'll be a four to six feet wide, so the single track, so it'll be kind of a walker front, but then you can use fire as well, but it'll also be...
So it'll be, it's gonna, that, that trail would be, like, the trail that's there now is great, because you gotta really keep watching where your step is, you gotta run a little slow, and you don't fall and break your wrist.
Exactly.
This is more of a user-friendly portion.
Exactly, and it'll also pay the department a lot as well to add uh, a trail head as well as a lighting.
I got you. I got you.
I just, I looked at it, I mean, because I don't like to say, you know, weigh in on anything, but I'm looking at this, I don't feel like that puts us in a good situation. I don't feel comfortable that we'd be successful.
So, you just need our permission to say, or you just, this information only? Did you just let us know that?
No, I, I would like to just to kind of, our commission has already voted, but I want, I think it would help just to ratify, you know, I mean, I didn't sign up, I think Pam had said, it helps his recommendation to have his vote on it, on that.
And so, we're gonna vote to reject all bids? That's what we're voting on?
Because if we go with the second bid and that, if it'd be in federal.
So, are we putting it all out to bidding?
Yeah, we're starting.
We're not waiting to be competitive bidding.
There's no scenario in this that, that's.
So, we're just reject, start fresh.
And the, 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 actually voting on this already.
That's right. We're just, we're just voting to support. And I make a motion to be vote to support that decision.
So, I don't say, I have a couple of questions. I'm, I'm Google, when, when we put it back out for re-bid, what are we doing? Do we have anything in place to keep this from happening?
Yeah, uh, the, the verb is on there, we lowest qualified bid and we'll, we'll basically sit down.
So, you're gonna qualify, qualify the bidders, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And that's some of the things that we haven't done in the past. And so, this guy thinks about this and stuff too, that we'll.
This, this was, this was done before you.
Right, right, right. So, I just want to make sure that when we go back that we're.
Making sense.
Exactly, exactly. And then one of the things also is probably when, whenever the, the tabs get open that night, they'll be in apparent low bidder and that's all the information we get and we'll qualify uh, through our doc's recommendation as far as the scope of work and all that, so.
We're trying, we're not going to put something out and say, well, we get.
I just, I just want to make sure we had something kind of in place to, to hold, to kind of hold their finger to the bar so that maybe it gets a little more equal across.
Right.
Well, a lot of times too, you'll see these guys piss up way up high. They don't really want the job if they want the man in the hat, gotta do. Yeah, so, I mean, that's why sometimes you'll see that one bid being way out there, that's what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, I know it's local.
I hear a motion second.
There's a motion and it's.
The greatest thing is he gets lost visiting.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Dr. Johnson.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors. I believe that, oh, we have another nine and it's just a update for your information. I'm gonna hand you this now on that end and I'll be back on that end. Uh, I get excited easily. So, this came in the mail. We were expecting it. I talked to uh, folks from the Highway Department, R doc. We understand that we are now a project or at least made a step toward project or a bypass. So, what you have in your hand is an official document from R doc just explaining what the process has been, what the findings are up to this point. Uh, obviously, it's been, uh, obviously, but there has been no uh, what am I trying to say? Not economic study, but the uh.
Checking.
Checking for bugs and stuff, that study, uh, that's not.
R P R.
Thank you very much. That's a big word for me, thank you. Uh, study. And so, we have a document that's, that has this on there. It talks about some things that are troublesome to the Highway Department. I'm using my own language and you can read that. I'll get you a copy of it later, but at least we're on, on the docket. State Representative Matt Pitch is in the corner back there hiding and so, he's here, I guess, making a help, wanting to be a part of this. And if you got any questions, I know Representative Pitch works for R doc with us on this too. I continue to bug uh, literally the governor and anybody else we see. I know Chief Ryan was in recently and uh, and at the same table or whatever with the governor and Attorney General and dropped deal, bypass, uh, work with them too. So, wherever we go, we're all right. So, at least it's there. There's some information there. Again, I'll give you the way to copy this. Uh, it doesn't say anything, we've not been told the price current, twenty seventeen cost of this project is a project of twenty-six million dollars. Uh, it doesn't say we have to have half of it, but we know that would be nice and bump us up probably on the list a little bit if we had that. So, I, I think it's just important that someone knows that we're working on it and we're studying it or the Highway Department's looking at it. And yes, they still have our, our uh, city study from two thousand and seven. So, this has kind of been added to it. Remember indication that we have, this is, this is the best so far.
Are we limited to just getting more asking for state funds or do you go?
Uh, we're, I think Representative Pitch might be able to answer that later. I can't even. The question whether we, are we restricted or limited to asking for federal or state funds? I mean, I think any way we come up with some money, is that fair?
Whatever you find the funds, you find the funds.
I mean, if you start marketing our federal guys too, I mean, we had a, we went there, the White House, we talked about infrastructure and Ozzy Rose is number one.
They get funded if they're very, have different ways around the state, municipality, so they do it, they're funding.
And if we knew somebody that was headed, you know, Lash Lasher's son, that might.
Why not? That's what I mean.
I'm throwing you on the bus there.
That's right. Me and Doug are getting company in the.
That's, that's right. So, just, just to say that it's there, we're working on it and our doc is taking us seriously up there. So, uh, and eventually, we, you and the council were talking about funding other ways and or not. It's always fun to mention the T word, the tax were extension of what we already have or whatever it takes, but again, we were looking at around three million, I think now, we'll be by the end of the year in uh, street fund. So, at the current rate, it would take us a long time to accumulate another ten million dollars to go forward this. And by the time we did that, the twenty-six million dollar cost would probably be about sixty, seventy million. But, so anytime you can encourage anybody you know in the state legislature or anywhere else, or R doc, please do so and, and don't be a pest like I have become. It is taking support that we, we want.
So, hopefully it'll make us, I've tested a lot of all my Twitter people and stuff, I saw. So, we had to add your back to our Twitter.
There you go. Any questions on that report? And again, I'll give, we'll give copies. And I asked you, you about seven minutes, four seconds, I have to run everybody a copy and I don't want you to get.
I'll get mine.
Uh, we'll get you a copy of that, but don't run off of that and you. All right, uh.
I turned the square around.
Do what?
It's in the roundabout.
Oh, very good. Roundabout. I like roundabouts. So, that's that. Uh, that is the only last item on the agenda as far as new business. Department reports and questions for council. Got a few department ends here. Those that are love our city are still here. Those that don't. Here they are. I'll take a stand before you. My pressure, my pressure. Uh, I would like to say a couple of things real quick. I'll, I'll get it in there before I forget it. Uh, I know it's not missing over my time, but we had a, uh, you saw on Facebook in the news, uh, Don Zimmerman, President of Municipal League, passed away last week, I believe it was. So, prayers for, for that family. Don was part, he was municipal for fifty-two years, I believe. So, he, he passed away, a stroke and then another stroke and talk of that. He was not at municipal this year when we attended. Uh, they didn't really announce what was going on, I don't think, but we, after we got back, he passed away. So, municipal, the state of Arkansas, a law state, very, very good man. So, I'm not sure about.
He was an advocate for municipal, municipalities. I mean, he was, he stood in the gap.
Yeah, he was a man. So, it'd be still what he missed. Um, I know Sturridge, only good though, Sturridge, Chief Ryan, recognized over this past weekend uh, for his service as president of the national, or uh,
Arkansas.
Arkansas, not the national, yeah, but Arkansas State uh, Fire Chief Association.
Arkansas Association.
President. So, he was black and didn't hurt.
Didn't hurt.
So, that was, that was a great for, for achievement for the city of Greenwood to be recognized for that. Um.
Your sign, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sign, thank you. We were very proud of the sign at the Gateway Center in Greenwood. Uh, the logo is up, as you know. Dusty came out, took some pictures.
Get saved that though.
We're gonna fix that. Uh, we are waiting, we're waiting. Thank you. I expected Daniel. We're waiting to hear back from the Highway Department, R doc, that we sent, that the council agreed for me to sign the uh, maintenance agreement, if you will, on the properties, which Dennis just loves enough because we now maintain that out there. But it also gives us the opportunity to look at the electric power that is there. So, as soon as that permit comes in, we'll proceed and get power from the light pole that is lighting the parking lot over to our sign and listen to get that lit.
Yes, in conjunction with that, it seemed like I thought with the, the artist catch up of the, of the sign, that there was landscape around it. I think what would be.
There was. We, we, we haven't done anything yet. One, you've got to maintain that. Uh, two, you've got to maintain it. And three, you have to maintain it. Uh, but so, I, basically, we probably will look at that again. I know as a joke, Tammy wrote down every invasive plant that there was that they said we couldn't have.
They have a list of invasive plants that you cannot have.
Yeah, there are a huge list, but we'll look at that. I think it lends itself to some, something. Uh, but obviously, you got to be careful about what you plant, water and that sort of thing. Since the street department's taken care of it, I think we can just do whatever.
There's no water, you can have that water run down there.
So, I agree.
Water.
We have, we have, or can you water with cash system? I don't know. Uh, but I, I agree. Thank you. I think it looks awesome and we've got a lot of really, really nice comments on it. And uh, it's a, it's a good addition to our, our community. Michael Chong, designer of that several years ago, uh, John McKenney, format, book format, donated the labor to mount the logo on uh, Acme Brick, donated brick. And then, of course, the council voted to back for it and get it done. So, only took a little longer than what I said, but we got it done. Um.
Okay. Uh, one thing, yes, uh, talking, I think you seem to like to talk to Nathan. Uh, he said that on this trail proposal, whatever, he said there was solar lighting that was gonna be implemented. I was wondering, uh, also if we could, you know, use that solar lighting, you know, around the existing trailer, kind of around the, uh, from like the uh, caboose or whatever around the city hall.
Yeah, that's something we are looking at, such a from a safety aspect. And there are grants out there, green initiative and public safety grants as well that, you know, the one thing we want to make sure is we don't, you know, have too much light spill on there and, you know, take away from any kind of, for like, what is the trick or treat that, you know, a lot of our life. But we look at the ground lights as well on some of the back parts of it, you know, swingables. They're just so flush that, but I think in this case, if you get enough of, you know, from solar exposure, it'll be the way to go on that. So, we are and we'll do, we'll mimic exactly what we're doing because there are some areas that we really need to be lit long-term, but that is on the, on the plan.
Well, again, I was thinking, you know, uh, you know, in other areas where it is, you know, uh, make part of the electricity, but I'm thinking right there on that one, you know, to me, basically, we can get L E D lighting, you know, some sort of, you know, as long as it kind of looks the same copy as uh, decorative lighting.
Tammy and I witnessed, I say witnessed, we on the way to Little Rock recently, west of Little Town, if we go through, they have a bridge. They actually.
Dan.
Danville has some solar lighting on their trail there at their city hall. They have a little bridge. Not too much like what we have back here. This gentleman's gonna put it in place for me one of these days. I just know he is. Uh, but I will say that although, I don't know what else to say, but just, just as I was gonna say, because although a decorative light is a decorative light and then the panel's this big, so I guess it just depends on what you like or what you want to put up with. But you would think that at some point, somebody could come up with a little smaller panel to light that light, but, but they had about ten of them.
Oh, at least.
Can't imagine exactly what they cost. I know our decorative lighting, just around town, around square, goes around two thousand dollars total, I think, or it was fifteen hundred or something like that. But yeah, it's possible. You just have to decide on what you want.
Now, let's see if you go after the factor on that, we can get that.
Yeah, yeah. Because I know you're still probably having your list under the bridge too, you didn't, you didn't say that, and street sweeper. Anything else, council, from, from native employees up here? Oh, I think there's this little something going on on Wednesday. What is that all about? I heard, I heard something.
Uh, I guess, oh, I'm here real quick. Uh, the uh, I've worked with two cities and I'll say this real quick, just on you guys behalf. A lot of times your board director, your council gets far away from a fan like that as they can because, you know, they, some of it, I appreciate all the support you guys, you know, knowing it's my first one, so I really appreciate that. Um, just all the help you guys offered. So, that's kind of nice to see because it's all in mentality. So, uh, everything built is about where we wanted it to be, you know, everybody, everything's in motion. You'll start to see stuff forming up and tomorrow's stage construction will start it out and then nine o'clock in the morning.
How many vendors?
A hundred and six, a hundred and six vendors.
Did the old man get his spot at the farmer's market? Who was? I tried and they wouldn't let me in. I, I can't believe it.
Oh, the farmer's market? Oh, he is in. He brought me to Vegas.
Oh, did he?
He loves his spot.
I thought we moved that. See value?
No, we, we had to actually turn the corner. Last year, we turned the corner with, just like craft adventures. This year is food trucks. All the way down to Evan's chiropractic office is food trucks down Main Street. So, we've got, so come hungry because we've got some really good ones.
What better place for the adult B M X backers in front of your office?
Hard job.
We need a, we need a table.
She better get her car.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. Anything from anybody else in council?
Yeah, I've got a question. This is probably a little complicated. But I keep dropping by and I keep looking over at our new sign to the left. And I turn that corner to the right, I see this pretty sign that's got a map of this developed area that's a big old dirt mound right now. I wonder what Inex had for the planning, we should pass it all the phases and still have to plant by the hall if we want.
Mr. Bell's not here tonight. He has, he had, did he present that to you last month? We have, we have something for you to look at. Uh, it's a three hundred foot, give or take corridor all the way to uh.
Well, he showed us something, couple of ones going down the highway is.
Yeah.
I'm talking about, I see a pretty picture of lots that are established, new roads, heat on that area that's giving strip line.
With the toes or something.
Right. But I'm just saying, before, there's obviously a plot, a flat somewhere that's, somebody got an idea what they want to do with that.
Very unofficially. I've seen it. It, it's very preliminary, but, but yeah, and your, your question is, are we gonna get, are we?
I was wondering how, we can get that Inex data. They say that way they have to violate our, our rules because they can do this.
How long they gonna let it be?
And I hear about, well, it's our planning district. We've got a five mile.
I don't want to hear about a flat open in the city. He's willing to, I've, I've spoken to the property owner. He's willing to do just that. I'm not sure what the hangup is. I'll find out. All he has to do is file papers and really come, come in uh, on his own. I mean, there's a little bit of cost to it, but he, he says he's willing. One thing that he's waiting on to.
His water rights?
It's water issue for him and I, the, the, my buddy from the water commission's here and I don't guess, but water, the water commission is working in there. I really do, and I, I told Charlotte when they, they, the commission made this decision to make an offer to James Fork to purchase water rights out there, that this council needs to know what that, what that offer is. Uh, I don't know exactly that you have to approve it. They have their own, they have the money that you have approved for them as a, as a commission, but I think it's important. And I think I, I expressed that to the chairman of that committee and nobody disagreed with it, but there is a, there is an offer on the table that has either been delivered or will be delivered very soon to James Fork. I don't think they'll accept it because it's about a third of what they offered to sell it to us for, which we, we believe and certainly the commission believed was too expensive. So, there's some workings there. Uh, and as soon as that gets a little bit more settled and we can make a decision and you guys know what's going on over there, I think, I think you'll see a little bit more action. I, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for Mr. Burke because he's his own man. It's his property, his own business, but uh, he has trouble. I do know this, that when folks call and ask about putting something there, they want to know what's gonna be there. Are you gonna have water? And he has actual water, but he doesn't have any. There's no fire protection. So, I think he's having a hard time selling any property or getting somebody to commit without that. So, the pieces are very, very slowly in right position. But he took, took everything, every bone. I thought he believed that he, he's willing to do just that and come on in.
So, just to make long story longer, we Inex, I don't care who's got the water rights. If it's in the city Greenwood, that means we can start figuring out how to get fire protection to them and sewer or.
Sewer's, sewer's there. It's, it's there.
So, the fire protection had to come off of the James Fork, so, so how does that work? If James Fork has. If James Fork has the water rights, and they're putting down, we, we get the plat for this developed area, commercial, I hope, and most of it, and James Fork's gonna put water lines down, but we have to put the fire hydrants on their water lines?
Well, that's. Now, they, the development, will have to meet state fire code, 300-foot spacing.
All that stuff.
All that stuff that we have, and then James Fork has to figure out how to deal with that, if they're developing, all we have to do is go up there and say, yes or no.
Okay, so, now, if we purchase the water rights, and we can run our own water out there, is that the point?
We got a 10-inch water line sitting around there, crackling.
Well, I'd rather James Fork do all that, playboard and run water, but why do we want to pay?
We don't know that they will or want, or can, or can't, that's, that's where the negotiations are, if you will, and to me, they've been kind of slow and nonexistent, to be honest with you.
Well, but I think, I think to Tim's point, if that piece of property is part of the city, and our motivation as the council to press, put pressure on the water commission to go out there and negotiate with these water rights.
I would love.
So as far as part of the force goes, if he's having trouble fitting these pieces together, he needs to understand that we can put the force of the city behind this, if he's in the city.
That's what I want.
Here's what I would like to ask of the council, is for this council to attend the Water Waste Work Commission meeting.
You don't.
No, that was, kind of silly talking, but I'm telling you, they need to hear the council's concerns over this, and they could talk, and I'm not trying to belittle or badger those guys at all, because they have a job to do.
And that's what, city, I don't care if we have the water rights.
A little subbing request.
The first thing has to be part of the city, that's the first thing, it's really part of the city.
Third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, is that?
Twenty-third July.
It's just like, it's just like this, this simple, that we spent, we ponied up the money, I don't practice a lot, kick in some cash for that water I put in, but look what happened.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's just like.
We spent $364,000.
It's like one of them little civilization ads on your phone, you lay that water, and all of a sudden, these buildings, people are on it.
Please come and help.
And all mine is, you got, that's been, that's been some money.
The commission, I mean, the point is, I don't want to have a commission if somebody invited to sit here. You want to be showing the commission meeting, you got to tell.
I'm just saying, I've got to spend a little money, or a place of money, in this, in this.
Somebody's gonna make it first.
And I'm trying, I'm trying to tell you what I believe, the council and this discussion for.
If I can get, if I can get him to voluntarily annex, I'll, we'll do that.
That's the first step, to me, if that happens, because until then, it's just posturing, and what if we go down there and lobby real hard, and get the water rights, and be like, I don't even know what I said, I don't, I don't really, I'm gonna want to do, I'm gonna build all this stuff, then I'll come into the city, and I can dodge all y'all's guidelines, and rather even do that, but, you know, that potential's there.
Okay. It's interesting, Tom sits in those meetings, as I do sometimes, and I sit in the back, just like these folks do, don't have a big part of it, they allow me to speak, just like anybody else. I'll work with that end of it, and.
But here's not, here's, here's, now that you can load a kilo on. You know, because here's my problem with that, what you mean, your conversation, you sit back there, and you're just lucky to part of it, no, you are the part of it, I have a problem, because you are the mayor, they should, everything still should come to you, I don't care if it is a commission, that chairman of that commission still should sit down and have a conversation with you, just like these people that work for that commission supposedly, still should have an answer to you.
We communicate a little bit, but it's not.
I'm just telling you, that's my, that's my opinion, now, so I want to get in, they're down here every day, they still got to answer to somebody, those people ain't down here every day. I have a problem with that.
So.
But I do agree with Lance, is that, you know, we've got a little in there, too, because that prime property that Dollar Tree, and Planet Fitness, or whatever, and.
I think you're sitting.
Was there a long time as regular estate, but it doesn't happen on it until water sewer.
Water was in the town.
Breaching my service.
But all of that's part of, the first part of all that is, is kind of part of us.
Right, and I agree.
That's the first one.
But, but I, what I'm saying is, Mayor, is the Water Waste Work Commission, you should have a lot of input in that.
He's got to be about once.
Well, they can be fixed.
You just, yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that you should be able.
I'm not unwilling to have a lot of.
You are an elected official, you are, you are a chief and detective officer, period, end of story.
But there is a commission, and it has its, it has its rights, and help you.
And that's a good reason we set that up, because not everyone that's sat in this chair.
Exactly.
And that's, some of the things for that brand reason, that's coming back.
They have to report.
No, we're the ones that.
Have you heard from them? What's left that I've heard from them?
I'm a bit of fact of the commission, so I know, I get it, and I appreciate it, I believe in you, but, and you're right, you're exactly right, so.
Sometimes the truth hurts, people don't want to hear the truth, but the bottom line is, that's facts.
If, if a property comes in, I'll come down and do the beating and the arguing, and we'll get that.
Okay, we'll get that, we'll get him in, we'll get him in. You're right.
You got a problem, you have, you have to say what it is.
And you made a good point, I mean, but the point being that what we did, the city did, and the commission, and the council, everybody did to extend that water line out there, it was filled with dreams all over, you build it, and they come, and here they come. There is, and I, and I'm like, I'm regular Joe that says, okay, we got it there, just extend it up the road, and here we go, well, there are pressure issues and all that, and I get, that explained to me daily, although I'm not sure, some of it's not just something else, but, so, there are, there are true issues there, but.
Well, the, the other thing is that that whole north side of Tinsborough is not in the city, so how you get to the corner property traditionally, might be just run along Tinsborough down to the corner, now you have to dig underground, but.
Which a road crossing, by the way, is not like we used to think it was, and, wait, another that road is not billions of dollars, I mean.
Right, but it still doesn't make sense if we add the north side of.
No, if it's over there, and, and there are people on that side, too, that want in the city.
They make their property up.
They're already, you know, I, I know one specifically, specifically, we like to joke, that is, we're losing around $10,000, which is, not going to make us rich, but $10,000 a year sales tax revenue, just going to what, because they're out of city limits, and he's ready also, so.
We'll start having him come in voluntarily, lobby for that, letting them know, support that, if you get that sort of domino effect going down that road.
And now, I'm saying, I would say out of every four that's okay, you got one or two that's, well, fine, but that's the nature of the game, they, so, and, and they're not necessarily businesses, they're just residents that fly, live in the country. Okay, we did it when you can't walk, right? It's good, it's good, I know, I just couldn't stand it, because I don't want to go home before nine o'clock. Anything else from council, that is your meeting, and I, again, I worked, it is good to see you here, up and around, and looking much better than Tom ever has.
I got, I got another question, and it's not even, I'm gonna go on that, I wish again, but, no. Buy a regular bags for this, this deal.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a spitball, if you want to, I feel like this over there.
No, I'm just, what I was saying is, is there some way, because you're gonna have every shape, form, fashion of the world, my thought is, is it something that we could offer?
Yeah, but there's not, I mean, when I bought them, when I bought them, they were just standard size.
I'm just saying, we buy, we buy them by thousands, and say, hey, if you're gonna get your, but you gotta get your bags, you gotta get them to the city.
Good. But I, they're not.
You go, Walmart.
They come in a standard size, they're, they're kind of a pain in the butt, because you can't, and we get down there, straight, leave them like this, they don't stretch out the way that a lab bag does, but once you get, the other, the flip side of that is, they stand up really, so once you get them to a certain point full, you stand them up and shovel them in tatters.
Well, I guess my thought is, instead of, like, you have to go Walmart, what's when she come to city by the end, thanks, could we do that?
I suppose we check into it.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, it's, it's all to itself, I'm not saying give them away, I'm saying to itself, you gotta.
Make sure you got all the people.
Right, I mean, that way, they got some buildings come down here, so they have to run off the street, and drive a fine.
It's like doing the harder one, do the rest.
Right.
We'll check into that.
I'm not against it, you know what I mean? I just, I just, I'm just saying, I just, I'm just saying, why couldn't we?
My emotions are making.
Right. That's another question I got, I know that one's weird, but what we, what we're looking at on time, we recently had opened, we.
Uh, thirty gallon, excuse me, thirty gallon heavy-duty brown paper one bag, are $10 for ten, or dollar bill.
So for seventy-five down here, for?
You can buy them on Amazon Prime.
Well, I'm not gonna buy them on Amazon Prime, so.
You should get it out of town.
Yeah, dinner's getting out of tax, I mean.
I bet.
Just, I'm just asking to check into it.
Would you ask me?
But you got, you know, you want to sell.
Free department.
Agency, uh, I'm not pursuing, not anything yet, I'm just trying to kind of get over what happened, to be honest with you, and get through free and fast, and, and again, we got great air, and stepped up to the plate, but we'll, we'll be looking at that very soon. I know, I know some of you have suggested that we may look at some restructuring ideas, I don't know that, you know, what all that entailed, what the ideas, but yeah, I think we'll start talking about some stuff, but right now, they're flowing pretty good. I spent about two hours, give or take, with them the other day, which didn't run anybody off, I'm surprised, I'm glad I was there, but that's a good group of guys, they're working good together, they want, they want that flow to keep going, momentum that was there, just going to continue. I know, I know, we've taken on, we, they have taken on a pretty size, good size project there on Denver Street to correct some drainage issues, which turned into be bigger than what we thought, uh, bigger, biggest bike classing in the world, but anyway, things are going on pretty good. I, I will say to council, and let you know that we immediately reaffirmed a, a unwritten, whatever you want to call it, law, guideline, that all articles that belong to you personally, if you work with the city greenwood, are to be removed from the city premises, from, taken home, get them home, keep them home, and don't bring them back, and likewise, no more borrowing of anything, period. I mean, it's kind of, kind of a hard thing to swallow, and, and again, with the exception of police department, who will, is very quick to point out that sometimes things have to go on, because it's part of their, part of their job, but as far as equipment, it just seems to me, I don't ever care to deal with anything like that, even similar to that more, so we just stopped it, and everybody's just on the same page. And, and on that note, Chester, who is our master electrician for the street department, we have allowed him in the past to have his tools on premises, because some of that's very specialized, totally to take them home, and the city will purchase whatever he needs, we'll just have, we'll just have to buy the bullet, we'll do it, and buy what he needs, so that's, that was my take on what we need to do, so.
Mr. Steve.
Sir.
Chester is concerned about locking those tools up, too, so I think with the tools we need required.
Absolutely, yeah.
He's locked.
Get together.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, and I'll just, you know, I'll say, I was one of the people to talk to Mayor about this, you know, with, with the street department, with code enforcement discussion that we were having, the discussion about, you know, trash pickup, and how that may or may not go, just all of those things, it seems like a good time to have the discussion of, you know, should there be, I don't know, what, an authority or some director of operations or something, I don't know. I don't know if all that fits together correctly, yeah, I mean, you know, about all public works, I, I don't know, but we ought to have the discussion.
Absolutely.
Now, and then try to make it.
Right, and I don't, and unless the council would stretch me different, and I don't know, I don't think you're asking that, Lance, but as of right now, we're, we're good, as we are, kind of cruising along, I don't want things to change, and certainly don't want to be anything limbo either, we're, we're covered very well.
That's basically all I'm.
Yes, I'm very confident in, in Dennis and what you want on it, and he has assistance with Chad, from Chad Grous, who Chad is the one that stepped up to the plate, under previous conditions a couple years ago, it was kind of the same thing, so, got two, two good guys that are working together, they all are working together, so, yeah, we're, we're comfortable to move on, so.
I appreciate y'all fielding phone calls from one of our local postal workers about a water leak down her metal area, and I didn't realize what was going on, and then I, I think, maybe that's why one of our lines leaking, so I don't know if the guys have hooked in that, dug a hole, or checked one.
If you dug the hole, you have, the hole that you're gonna dig is gonna be mastered. I, I went out myself and talked to, actually, I talked to a gentleman, a gentleman on the phone, and I went out and looked at it, and I came back, and I got Tim, and we went back out to look at it, for him to explain to me what we're doing, or what we're not doing, what I thought we should be doing, and, and the, we're talking about this area.
It's my wife's.
Ah, well, I didn't, she had, she had, she was standing in water, and had put the mail, the mailbox, the mailboxes there, I think they're all one unit, and, and then, so, we're going to be digging that up.
Where is that?
On, on.
Creekwood.
Creekwood, Azalea, and.
Creekwood.
No, it's not Creekwood, it's, it's a Woodford, Woodford and Azalea, so we're gonna be looking at that, the water is still leaking, but I'm, I've been told by Tim, Mr. Posey, that we'd be, they've already done one call on it, so there's gonna be a massive, massive 15-foot hole there, dug, which is candid dangerous, and where it's situated, is literally beside a gentleman's privacy fence, and next to it, so we're addressing it, I was not pleased when I got the word that it was taking so long to address it, so that's why I went out and looked at it, so.
Well, she kept rapping to the postal bastard, and he finally said, isn't your husband all the same?
Well, that's my first reaction, was why, we heard, I didn't realize who it was, it's the resident that was driving a little bit, and not the postal, and I thought, man, if I was a postal person, that was, you know.
Well, what happened was, the word was, there's water standing, they can't get their mail, so you go out there, or people go and check their mail on roadside, it's fine, but my wife couldn't put the mail in there, because it was water standing.
As they go from.
Or get their mail. There's a rush to water line, I guess.
It's, it's leaking, uh, to me, when water's leaking out of the ground, I'm thinking, okay, we're gonna do this, and I'll fix it, but, now, they do have, and I told Mr. Posey to not go with, he, I encouraged him, and very, in very extensive call those residents and talk to them themselves after I did, and I said, and by the way, the people on the other side of town could care less that you have a big job over here, they want this fixed, and that's the way it is, so hopefully he addressed it that way, because they do have a big job over on Westwood Drive.
There's a hole about as big as the hole that happened.
Almost as big as that, that they're, and so, and they're, and they're limited, there're probably four guys that do that, so.
They are short.
And I have encouraged, and I know, when I encourage something, I always have to go back and see what I've encouraged, and it's the right thing to do, street department's kind of helping out a little bit, and we have to be careful when we talk about street open, anybody, and the auditors, or, you know, because those guys are restricted, they're fined, so, uh, they're working, but they're willing to do it, and it's really nice to know that they can work together and get, get things accomplished, so, no, thank you